Okay. Welcome to the May 9th Revere City Council. Please stand and salute the flag.
(inaudible) United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Fiscanti.
Here.
Here, quorum is present.
Before we begin, if the councilors don't object, I would like to ask for a suspension of city council rules for the purpose of taking item number 11, 22-137, which was a late communication relative to the resignation of Ward Five Councilor Al Fiore. Madam Clerk, if you can read the communication?
Communication from Councilor Fiore. Mr. President and members of the city council, due to my ongoing medical issues, I cannot effectively represent the residents of Ward Five. Therefore, effective today, I am resigning from the office of Ward Five City Councilor. I would like to thank the residents of Ward Five for the opportunity to serve and wish everyone well. Respectfully, Al Fiore.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish Mr. Fiore well. It was a pleasure sitting next to him since we were inaugurated, so I just want to wish him well, and if he needs anything, he can reach out to me. Thank you.
Councilor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's unfortunate that the counselor has given his resignation, but he has to do best for what is best for him, his family, and I wish him nothing but wellness and health in the future.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments of Councilor Cogliandro and Councilor Morabito. I've known and had a personal friendship with Councilor Fiore for 25 or 30 years, and he, you know, he brought a lot to this city council in terms of knowledge and understanding, but to follow up on what Councilor Morabito said, and, you know, his health is paramount, and doing what's right for him is going to supersede anything that any of us do up here in the city council. We have to make sure, if we're going to serve the residents well, then we have to be in the right frame of mind and be in the right health to be able to work effectively. So I think he's making the right decision, and I just want to offer him my best and continued support for whatever he needs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I also would like to say, obviously, our health and well-being should be our primary concern, and I'm glad that Councilor Fiore has made that decision to make his health a primary concern. While he will be missed, I think in respect his decision, it has been a pleasure serving with him for that short period of time, and I wish him nothing but the best and also a speedy recovery.
Council President Fiscanti, there is a special act that would require the city council to order a special election, and I have drafted a motion for the city council. If it would be okay to read it into the record?
Please do so.
Motion presented by the Revere City Council. In accordance with provisions of Section 3 of Chapter 147 of the Acts of 2004, the city council hereby orders a special election to be held immediately to fill the remainder of the unexpired term of Councilor of Ward Five due to the resignation of Councilor Al
On the motion?
What's the timeframe on it?
All in favor, all opposed?
It's the definition of immediately.
Okay, hold on a second. Oh, you want to ask what?
Yeah, what the definition of immediately is.
Speaking with, is actually Commissioner Fahey here? No. He's downstairs right now, but he said he would be able to come up and answer any questions. Immediate, the last time this happened, was in 2015 to fill a vacancy caused by the passing of Richie Penta. So that was in February. The election was held in May, so you're looking at about three months, two to three months.
Okay. That being said, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of April 25th, 2022.
All in favor.
Calendar item number three, public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on a bond authorization in the amount of $3,639,789 for the replacement of windows and doors at the Lincoln School.
We're going to start off with proponents, those in favor. Name and address.
Good evening. Richard Viskey, CFO, 221 Broadway. I'm here to speak in favor of this loan authorization. It is a loan that is in accordance with Mass. School Building Authority's Accelerated Repairs Program. The amount of the authorization is $3.63 million. We are eligible for up to 76% reimbursement, which would be approximately $2.7 million, assuming that we get maximum credit for all of the repairs, so the net bonding would be approximately $873,000. Any reimbursements would automatically reduce the authorization of the bond itself, so whenever we can leverage any kind of grant dollars against these types of projects, it's in the city's best interest, so I'm here to speak in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any, okay. Then no questions from the council? We can get a roll call on this?
Shall the city council approve a bond authorization in the amount of $3,639,789 for the replacement of windows and doors at the Lincoln School? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the bond authorization has been approved.
Seeing that Election Commissioner is present, if we can have him come up to the podium and answer any questions regarding this special election. Name and address, obviously.
Mr. President, Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner. I don't know if you've discussed this already, but relative to the vacancy caused by Council Fiore's resignation, you are issuing an order for a special election. I took the calendar that was used the last time there was such a special election. It's under review right now with the state elections out of an abundance of caution, but I think we're looking, assuming that you issued that order tonight, at probably about a 60-day time period, based on the history. So most likely nomination papers would come out next week, and the election would be tentatively on July 19th, which is a Tuesday. So that's the plan at this point. There's been some confusion, and frankly, it is a bit confusing, relative to the fact that we have moved to new district lines for the next ward election, because the seat was filled, as all the ward seats were filled, with what we would call the old or the current ward. That is, those are the lines that will govern this election. It's a bit of a challenge for us, because the state, the VRIS system that we keep all of the election information in, has already been updated to the new districts because of the legislative redistricting that took place and so forth. So the precincts in the fall will be, for the state election, will be the new precincts, but for this special election, we are going to have to use the old precincts. And there are currently five, for those of you who know Ward Five, there are five precincts, two subs and three main precincts. So those voting locations will remain the same for this one election. This will be confusing to people. It was confusing to us in the beginning. We had to get clarification about that, but it does make sense, because the counselor was elected to represent a district, and the person who was elected to fill his term was representing that same district. So I hope that didn't make it more confusing, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council Rotundo.
Just unfortunately, because of the litigious society we're in, statutorily have we adopted the new districts accordingly.
The districts have been approved and adopted for the subsequent election, so they would take effect for the legislative districts for the fall elections. For your next round of elections, they would take effect in 2023.
And currently, there's no, there's nothing on the books that state timeframe for the election of a new Ward Five Council. Is that correct? Do we have to change the charter?
No change to the charter required. Under the current chapter, such and such of the Acts of 2004, Ashley, I should remember that, because of a ward counselor, it does say, you know, obviously, you have to call the election. There are a number of statutes. That's why I have the calendar being reviewed by, I spoke to the Director of the Elections Division, Secretary of State, and they're happy to review it, but it's based largely on the calendar that was used the last time we did this, which was in 2015.
Thank you so much.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fahey, you walked into this job with the big reprecinct thing and now a special election, so my heart goes out to you for that, but I just want to, as someone who is, I'm the Ward Three Counselor, and I know there's going to be some confusion with that, but I just, I know we spoke earlier, but I want to offer my help as far as educating the people in that area or providing information or anything I can do to help with that process. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, Counselor. I was late coming up because we had our first, you added a former Counselor Reed into our board, which we appreciate, so we have a full board for the first time since I've been here and I think in some time, so we had a meeting and we ran a little late. That's why I was late coming up. But one of the things we talked about is having a very simple statement about this election to try to explain as easily as possible why this is kind of another one-off. I mean, we had sort of a one-off with the election in January for the regional school district, where everybody voted at one school. Now, you know, if you live in a certain part of Ward Five, maybe you're voting in Ward Five for this election in July, but then in September, you're voting somewhere else. So the confusion is unfortunately going to be somewhat inevitable, but we want to come up with this, and our thought is come up with a real simple, clear statement that everyone can use to just explain this and as much as possible. I mean, it's still going to be confusing to some people. We'll work with people wherever they're at on this, because then we flip in September to the new, to the new district, not for the local election, fortunately, but still for the state, and people will be voting in different polling locations. So there's inevitable confusion, so we'll do the best we can with that, but I appreciate your comments, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're poised with a very difficult question. In the event that someone who currently lives in the district within the confines of the old, you know, parameters gets elected, then they may find themselves outside the parameters thereafter. Would there be any idea, or shall I suggest asking the state whether or not we should be using the most currently adopted so that we don't have to run into an issue in the future? Because you're going to possibly vote yourself in and then vote yourself out by virtue of your residents.
Counselor, that actually happens, I wouldn't say often.
At the congressional level?
It happens at the congressional. It happens at the area that I used to work in before I came to work in Revere, had that happen with the state representative who resigned, the district, the seat was filled by someone, and the district changed dramatically. It's, I think it's just an unfortunate reality, is that the individual who, anyone who wants to run for the seat has to live in the current Ward Five. If their residence then shifts in the 2023 election, I guess they have to make a decision.
Which, they have to live there for at least a year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yeah, so, but then it does become an issue for the, you know, if where they currently live is in current Ward Five and then is not in the new Ward Five. So it's very unfortunate. It's very, my conversation with the election director was, you know, boy, this was a perfectly bad time from the perspective of everything else that's going on, as well as obviously your schedule as a council, so, but it is what it is.
Thank you. Council Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fahey, is this a one-shot deal, no primary?
That's correct. The statute that was adopted by the legislature on behalf of the city in 2004 says that there will be no preliminary election, that any candidate who is, who gets adequate signatures will be on the ballot. So it is different than the traditional preliminary thing that you would find in a ward election or a large election for that matter.
Well, no other questions? Thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you.
And good luck.
And I'll be getting that, thank you. We'll be getting that calendar to you as soon as we get the blessing from the state and make sure, it's my first one, I want to make sure I get it right, so we'll get that out, and then we will also, we'll share this sort of simple statement to explain it, and hopefully you can circulate it as much in your own networks as we'll do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, back to the order of business.
Unfinished business, calendar item number four, proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Revere by the applicant Enterprise Rental Car Company of Boston. Relative to an automotive rental car facilities in the HB District, this is for engrossment and ordainment.
Counselor Zambu, I'm sorry. Name and address to the, for the record. My apologies.
Anthony Zambuto, 87 High Street. So I'm here to speak for the last time on this zoning change. This is a zoning change. Six months ago, a full council voted 11 to nothing against this change. My position has not changed. This opens up that whole corridor for this use. Now, everyone is on record. Some had very strong opinions against this zoning happening. It appears that some of those views have changed. Now, every vote up here is a vote of conscience, and I leave that to you to do what, to justify how you're going to change your vote, but there were a lot of comments, like it's not the highest and best use. Some said they could never consider voting for this zoning change, because it is a zoning change, in spite of the fact that the proponents did a wonderful job camouflaging this as a special permit. It's not a special permit. This is a zoning change. Some of the, some of the things that were offered are very attractive. Some might not be legal, some may be legal, but the bottom line is, this is a zoning change. And a lot of, some of us said up here, some of you said up here, that you would have to give this to the next person, the next client that came before you, once you give it to them. So I'm against this. I think that, again, it's a vote of conscience.
Thank you.
So be it.
Thank you. Thank you. That being said, we are going to call a roll call on engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending the revised order?
I'm sorry, Counselor Cogliandro wanted to speak. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Did you want to speak on it? Okay, yeah. Floor's yours.
I just, I just want to say a couple more things. You know, this company has bent over backwards. They have been to every meeting, they have done everything that we've asked. There's no camouflage being used, okay? They've been open and honest about everything. I do want to say one other thing. You know, there's a, where the old Papagino site is, that building was demolished in 2019. There was permits pulled to build in 2020 that were never paid for. And now, I've been to the last three site plan review meetings, they haven't shown up. This company has. They deserve this. Okay? And I give them my full support. They've worked way, way too hard on this, so I'm asking you all, you know, for your support as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Cogliandro. Anybody else want to speak? My apologies, I didn't see. All right, roll call them.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to automotive rental car facilities in the HB District? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
No.
No, Councilor McKenna?
No.
No, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscanti?
No.
No, the zoning change passes.
Next order of business?
Calendar item number five, this is unfinished business, petition by National Grid to install new underground electrical service to a pump station from existing pole number 1847 on Rice Avenue.
Any comments from the councilors? Oh, Moses, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Moses Okokro. My address is 177 Metford Street in Malden. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. So for this petition, National Grid is requesting to install two piece of three-inch conduits from an existing pole across Rice Ave to a pumping station for the purpose of providing them with electric service. Thank you.
Any questions from the councilors? Hearing and seeing none? Roll call.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested by National Grid to install new underground electric service to a pump station from existing pole number 1847 on Rice Avenue? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted. Next up is the Economic Development Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Silvestri.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. On Monday, May 2nd, we had the Economic Development Subcommittee, which we had a favorable committee for the parking business district, and we had a favorable vote. Thank you.
Okay. Roll, any, roll call them, roll call the vote.
Shall the city council adopt Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 22A 1/2, relative to a parking benefits district? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the statute has been adopted. Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
I'll speak on behalf of this. If, if councilors don't mind, thank you. This evening, we had a Legislative Affairs Subcommittee meeting regarding the bio safety levels for the city of Revere. There is, there was a pretty in-depth conversation and discussion about this, and we have elected to leave both motions and leave that in Subcommittee for further discussion. Thank you.
Next up is the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Keefe.
Mr. Chairman, we had two items in front of us this evening. Item, item number 22-127, that was Carbell LLC. This was voted on by the zoning Subcommittee unanimously and is passed favorably with special conditions, and that went right into the record, so I'd ask that we take a roll call of the whole on this.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscanti?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
And item number 22-128, Revere Dell LLC, that was held over, that will be remaining committee until the 23rd. Thank you.
Mr. President, well under, well under suspension of rules, if I might make a verbal motion, if, relative to, well, relative to the zoning item 22-128, which is the drive-through 304 Squire Road.
Sure.
Thank you. So as discussed in Subcommittee, I wanted to make a verbal motion tonight relative to the traffic, so verbal motion of Counselor Sorino that the Traffic Commission conduct a thorough study of the impacts of motor vehicular traffic on the following residential streets off of Squire Road, Kinney Street, Augustus Street, Sagurne Street, Derby Road, Orvis Road, Gore Road, and Charger Street. The purpose of such a study shall be to gather data and shall include car counts on these listed streets, along with data on the impacts of the Northgate Shopping Center and other Squire Road businesses on traffic on these residential streets. The ultimate goal shall be to implement a comprehensive traffic mitigation strategy to ensure these streets are not overburdened with vehicular traffic and shall include the feasibility of reversing the direction of the one-way on Derby Road from Squire Road to Grover Street and reversing the direction of the one-way on Sagurne Street from Malden Street to Grover Street.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, communication from a city auditor relative to bond recissions for prior fiscal year state revolving fund authorizations.
Good evening, councilors. Richard Viskey, CFO, 221 Broadway. As many of you know, since the city has been As many of you know, since the city has been under consent decree in 2011, there's been many bond authorizations with regard to the projects that have been done over the last 10 years, and reviewing all the prior authorizations, there's many projects that have been completed with amounts that were authorized to bond that weren't needed due to project savings or just coming in on the budget. All of those rescinded amounts are listed in the rescission of the bond authorization, and while we could go out and borrow against those authorizations for prior years, we have learned that a lot of the ARPA funds that have come in through the federal level to the state will be made available to the state revolving fund for principal forgiveness and upcoming bonds, so you will see a little bit down the road during the budget process, we will ask for more bond authorization to do those projects, but with those may come the ability to see about 30% to 40% of principal forgiveness on these loans. So we felt it was our best interest to rescind all the old bond authorizations, clear them off the books, and then try to get authorization for new bonds that may come with some principal forgiveness through the ARPA relief funds that will come in through the federal government to the state revolving fund program. So first step we want to do is rescind these bonds, clear them off our books, and then we'll come before you later on, before June 30th with some, some new authorization, so happy to answer any questions on that, but this will simply just be a vote so that we can take these off of our authorized and unissued debt for the city. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Rizzo?
Mr. President, just, I think you just answered it, because I, my question was going to be authorized and unissued, correct? I mean, this, you know, so, so these were bond authorizations that you had but never acted on them, never actually received funding on, correct? So you just want to, you just want to rescind all those authorizations so you can go out and reapply with the hopes of getting reimbursement through ARPA funds, correct?
Yeah, initially, I was actually going to try to use these bond authorizations from past years without, because they were already authorized and on the books, but then when I learned that we have the ability to get some principal forgiveness on some, we get a small amount of principal forgiveness through this program anyway, but the federal ARPA funds have now been rewarded to the state revolving fund program, so we can actually get upwards of 30%. So I want to take these off the books, and you're correct, this goes back to, first approval was 615, 2011, and if you look at the bond authorization, you'll see the original amount authorized, and then how much we borrowed and completed, these projects are deemed complete, so these dollars are available to borrow, but I'm really just trying to clean, clean the slate of all these old authorizations that we didn't bond and try to clean up our authorization issued and issuing the bonds, but that was a long way of saying, yes, you're right.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, it's glad to, I'm glad to see you doing, doing your due diligence, so.
I try my best.
Let's do a roll call on this.
Shall the City Council rescind the amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed but which are no longer needed for the purpose for which they were initially approved as reported by the CFO? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fiscanti.
Yes.
Yes, the bonds have been rescinded. Motions, calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the chief of police to heavily patrol Cushman Avenue due to dangerous speeding.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor direct the DPW to make various upgrades to Oxford Park, including trash barrels, dog waste dispensers, walkway improvements, weed barriers for flower beds, and the installation of a little free library.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I just, the DPW just did an amazing job with that flower bed, they just, they just revitalized it, but the rest of the motion speaks for itself. I'm doing the same thing down at Jacobs Park, we're just trying to get, you know, some walkways and just make it a, you know, a little more, a little more of a nicer area, so, thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor request Capitol Waste to appear before the City Council to explain recent behaviors over the last three months.
Counselor Cogliandro.
I had the opportunity to speak with them earlier today, and I've been assured that the issues are going to be addressed within their company, and I'd like to place this on file.
Place on file.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor request the chief of police to install a speedometer and potentially video monitoring at the intersection of Proctor Avenue and Adam Street. There are very dangerous speeding issues at this intersection.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've just received so many calls about this area, you know, people, people, we know that Proctor Ave, I think Counselor Keefe can speak to this, Proctor Ave has definitely had its issues with speeding, but, you know, I think we need to take it a little bit more seriously than we have, I, you know, I have the full faith in the RPD, so hopefully they'll, they won't take this motion lightly. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counsel President Fiscanti and Counselor McKenna that the City Council request Tom O'Brien of HYM Investment Group to appear before the City Council Committee of the Whole on Monday, May 16th at 5:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the new life sciences building to be constructed at Suffolk Downs.
If, if my colleague doesn't object, I'll, I'll let Counsel McKenna speak on this first.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have had contact with Tom O'Brien, and he assures that he will come to the meeting next week at 5:00, May 16th, to discuss the new life science building to be constructed at Suffolk Downs. He said he would answer everybody's question, so he would stay and answer. The meeting is for an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. Mr. President, during that time, could we have somebody from the Board of Health, preferably a doctor, to sit in on this meeting in case there are questions that need to be answered, questions that could be presented in a fashion that would be more digestible to the community as a whole, as there's been a lot of conversation regarding this particular development.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can we add that to the, to the motion? Thank you, invite the, thank you. Yes. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Morabito that the mayor request community development in the DPW to install decorative street lamps extending the entire length of Broadway.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I submitted this motion because many residents expressed their concerns about the lack of lighting at the beginning of Broadway and at the end. Currently, the street lamps on Broadway, they exist from Fennel Street all the way going northbound to Rosetti Street. So that leaves no street lamps going southbound from Fennel to Revere Beach Parkway and northbound from Rosetti to Beach Road. So after submitting this motion, I, the Community Development Program manager reached out to me to relay some information. She informed me that their department had submitted an application in their annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, and if approved by HUD, it would, they would be able to install six to eight street lamps. With that, CID, they also hope to utilize seed funds for some lighting, but when it comes to reality, it's not going to be sufficient to install those lamps, because only six to eight won't even cover a portion of either end. It will cover a small fraction of what we need to, so when the time comes, they're going to need our help on the City Council to extend the lighting, and I hope when that time comes that we're all on board to increase the lighting, especially with all the new businesses on Broadway. Thank you.
Any other, okay, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Mr. President, as we're running beneath the suspensional rules, I would request under 22142, in which we have HYM, if we could also invite the chief, fight chief as well. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, next motion.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counsel President Fiscanti that the mayor direct the CFO to provide the City Council with an up-to-date accounting of the use of ARPA funds, a breakdown of all ARPA-funded current and future employees, and the cost to maintain them. Further, that the CFO provide the City Council with any future potential expenditures from this fund.
Thank you. If my colleagues will allow me to speak on this, this is just a, I know we're getting some ARPA money in, approximately $30 million, and I would just like the council to be brought up to date with the spending of it, you know, and where they intend some more detailed accounting of it, and I think it, if they don't, if my colleagues don't object, I'd like to send it to Ways and Means, but I think we should have some discussions about where the money is being spent and know exactly what's going on, so. All in favor, all opposed? So, thank you.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor request the Vice Chair of the Human Rights Commission, Shay Usani, to appear before the City Council to discuss her verbal altercation with residents on December 20th, 2021, after the HRC meeting had ended.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, first off, I need to amend the motion to reflect the correct date, which I believe is December 2nd. If we could change that, no objection from anyone?
No.
Okay, so, plain and simple, I asked for video evidence of this, and I received it. The video is clear as day, and I'd go on record saying that that language coming from any mayoral appointee or elected official in the city is just unacceptable, and I'd like to have a conversation about it, and I do feel that an apology is deserved, so I hope that we can have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. No further business. The next City Council meeting is May 23rd. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Committee of the Whole is May 16th.
Just a point of personal privilege, please.
Sure.
I would like to extend my sympathy and condolences to the Rizzo family for losing Dan Rizzo's father last week. Dan Rizzo's father was a hooch. He was a great guy, I spent a couple of times with him, and I'm very, very sorry, I didn't know he was that sick, but I'm very, very sorry, and I would like to have a moment of silence for Dan Rizzo.
Meeting is adjourned.